I'd like to welcome everyone to the Planning Commission December 17th meeting. And like to say happy holidays to everyone. I hope every one of you is further along with your shopping and decorating and grocery shopping and preparation than I am, because I've got a long way to go. But anyway, welcome. Glad you're here. And we're going to have, we'll have a public hearing about the items that are on the agenda tonight. At the time we have the public hearing, anyone who is here with a concern is welcome to go to one of the microphones and give your name and address and tell us your concern. I will say, if there are people here who are speaking about the same item, try not to repeat what the first person said or previous speakers have said, because we hear everything that everyone says and make notes. And the members of the Planning Commission will be very attentive to whatever you want to state about that particular item. So there's no necessity to repeat anything. And first, I'd like to introduce our Planning Commission members, starting with Les.
Hello, I'm Les Tillery of Fuquann Partners Architects.
Tony Antonius with Medallion Builders.
Vince Dickens with Army Contracts.
Donna Lamb, Lamb Commercial Real Estate.
Kimberly Battle, Ammerdick.
I'm Janet Watson, I'm a retired builder.
Kelly Scrimshaw, Mayor Battle's office.
Peggy Richard, Rilter.
Jeffrey Rice, Lieutenant Huntsville Police Department.
I'm Marie Bostic, Planning Administration Staff.
And we have Claudia Anderson with the Legal Department, who is trying to hide back there, but she'll help us out when we need help. The first item on the agenda is the adoption of minutes. Has everyone had a chance to read those?
No to approve.
Okay. Any changes or additions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. Our next section is public hearings, and I'm going to invite people to speak on the first item, Broadway Trianna subdivision, a minor. Is there anyone here to speak on Broadway Trianna subdivision? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Item two is the Lodge at Johns, I'm sorry, Lodge at Johns Road, re-subdivision of a portion of Lot 1 of Vinemont property is a minor. Is there anyone here to speak on Lodge at Johns Road? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Item three, Mapco, a minor. Is there anyone here to speak with regard to Mapco? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Item four, Meadows Boulevard Connector Road. Is there anyone here to speak about Meadows Boulevard Connector Road? Hearing no comment, public hearing is closed. Item five, Oakwood subdivision Phase 2 at Lake Forest. Is there anyone here to speak on that item? Hearing no comment, public hearing is closed. Item six, Old Cove Phase 4 at McMullen Cove, a re-subdivision of Old Cove Phase 2 at McMullen Cove, and a re-subdivision of Old Cove Common Area and easement at McMullen Cove, a minor. Is there anyone here to speak to that item? Hearing no comment, public hearing is closed. Item seven, Overland Cove Phase 2, a re-subdivision of tract A of Overland Cove. Is there anyone here to speak on Overland Cove? Hearing no comment, public hearing is closed. Item eight, Providence Phase 8. Is there anyone here with concerns on Providence? Hearing no comment, public hearing is closed. Item nine, Strong Commercial Center subdivision Phase 2, re-subdivision of lots 2 and 3 of Strong Commercial Center Phase 1, re-subdivision of Lot 2 of Strong Commercial Center subdivision, a minor. Is there anyone here to speak to that item? Hearing no comment, public hearing is closed. Next item is location, character, and extent, Huntsville Botanical Gardens, Lower Lake. Is there anyone here in regard to Huntsville Botanical Gardens? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Item 11, amendment to final plat. Doug Hill Farms, a petition for amendment of the final plat, remove plat restriction on Lot 11, all STD land to remain in its natural state, no construction permitted. Is there anyone here regarding that item? Hearing no comment, public hearing is closed. Item 12 is street name changes. A, inspiration on Green Mountain subdivision, a portion of Viridian Way to Bluff View Drive. Is there anyone here to address that matter? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Item B is Holiday Boulevard, a new road connecting Highway 72 West to Brown's Ferry. Is there anyone here with concerns about that name change? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Item 13 is zoning, JLB rezoning. Is there anyone here, Lisa, you're going to present that first before we have the public hearing? Okay.
This is the JLB rezoning request. The request is from Residence 2A District and Neighborhood Business C1 District to Highway Business C4 District. It's the hatched area you see here on the north side of Carl T. Jones and on the west side of Ledges Drive. Residence 2A District is a high-intensity residential district. It's a total of 125.72 acres. Neighborhood Business C1 District is a smaller-scale retail sales and services district, a total of 1.17 acres. So that gives us a total of 126.89 acres to be rezoned to Highway Business C4 District. The property owners have offered plat restrictions if the property is rezoned to Highway Business C4 District. And those restrictions would prohibit the following uses: auto auctions, automobile sales, automobile repair garages, light manufacturing and assembly, mobile home and trailer parks, Class 1 club liquor retailers without package sales, Class 1 lounge liquor retailers without package sales with or without entertainment, Class 2 club liquor retailers without package sales, and Class 2 lounge liquor retailers without package sales with or without entertainment. And those are your bars and your private clubs. And so they've agreed to restrict out those uses that I just listed from this request.
Thank you very much, Lisa. Is there anyone here to address the issue of rezoning JLB? Yes, sir. Would you go to the microphone and give your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening. My name is Gary Smith. I'm the president of the Ledges Community Association, the homeowners association that supports the Ledges community. My address is 88 Ledge View Drive in the Ledges subdivision, 35802.
Thank you.
We are, we're speaking on behalf of the Joneses and their, or the JLB organization that is requesting rezoning. We are supporting their rezoning request from residential to commercial C4. However, we do have some concerns about the future planning associated with access into that rezoned area from the Ledges Drive access. Ledges Drive is a privately-owned access that transits about two miles up to the top of Huntsville Mountain and the Ledges community. There is significant traffic in that area. The developers have completed a recent traffic study, and the city of Huntsville has also done a recent traffic study within the last several days on various portions of Ledges Drive, focusing mostly on the lower end closest to Carl T. Jones. Our concerns are several. One is the amount of traffic that will be resultant from the extensive shopping complex that's going in. There is a request, and there is an existing easement that would provide some access from the private road, Ledges Drive, into that, I think some call it north, some call it west, but that property that is being rezoned, C4. There's significant congestion in the area today. The Ledges has not been fully built out yet. There's still about 30% of the homes that will be built out there. In addition, we support about 1,000 members of the Ledges Golf Club as well with that roadway and surface area. We have been working with the Jones family, the developers of this property, to look at alternatives that might provide access from Ledges Drive into their, their new development. We haven't come to closure yet on that, largely because we, we're not quite sure yet that the traffic studies have been adequate. Our high-traffic periods for the Ledges Club and the community are typically on Thursday, Friday, and Saturdays. The traffic studies that have been done to date are on, have been conducted on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. They haven't looked at the higher volumes of traffic on weekends and have not yet considered the full build-out of the Ledges community as part of the input for the types of access that might be required to provide safe access from the Ledges Drive area. The final thing I would comment is that we've done extensive renovations to the Ledges entrance area over the last six months to the tune of about $100,000. And at least some of the proposals that we're looking at and the alternatives we're looking at could affect that investment that's been made in the, in the Ledges access area. So let me, let me just reassert that we are in favor of the transition of this, or rezoning of this property into the C4 arena. We are working actively in an ongoing fashion with JLB development to, to come up with some solutions and alternatives to provide safe access from Ledges Drive. Any questions for me?
I think you've given us a really concise statement, and I appreciate it.
Okay.
And we may have some later, but.
Okay.
Right now, thank, thank you very much, Mr. Smith. Is there anyone else who would like to address the rezoning, JLB rezoning? Yes, sir. Would you go to the microphone, give your name and address?
Good evening. I'm David Nuttall, 202 Walker Avenue, 35801.
Would you spell your last name, please?
N-U-T-T-A-L-L.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I have a couple of questions relating to this and a couple of comments. The first is, what constitutes a highway, being zoned to C4, which is, which is highway business? And Jones Valley doesn't seem like a highway. That just could be semantics, but I had, had that question. The other is in regard to the development itself and the design of that. I'm not here to say yea or nay as to whether I agree with it being commercial. The statement was high-end commercial and a quote, "We're going to do whatever we can to make it aesthetically pleasing." I don't agree with that in the slightest, because what's being proposed looks like every other development. There's nothing new about it. It's parking in front of shops. That's not high-end. It's not even remotely high-end in terms of visual. And if we're talking about protecting what was once the largest urban farm in the nation, and my concern then is, there are no provisions whatsoever in the zoning code to leave anything as open land. For example, Big Spring Park is C3 business. So theoretically, Big Spring Park could be built on at some point. I'm not suggesting the city would sell it. I'm just making the point that we're looking at zoning without actually having a full picture of what the city wants to be. So my suggestion would be the Planning Commission should look at the zoning laws as a whole and say, what do we really want the city to become? And should we address what I see as a gaping hole in the zoning ordinance that doesn't allow for open space to be protected? We either have developed land or land available to be developed. And the restrictions, the plat restrictions are not enough. They, they don't protect. And so my other question would be, how long do those plat restrictions last? So we talked about restricting this one. I think there should be a lot more restrictions capable of being imposed. So I think there's some questions I have, and I'm not sure who to address them to other than starting here.
This is the proper form.
Okay.
Well, I would ask Marie, if she would, to define the highway section to, I think that's a question of his that we can answer at this time. How is a highway identified? What constitutes a highway?
Yeah, it kind of depends on what context you're talking about. In this, in the zoning context, highway business is related to the volume of traffic on a roadway.
And I'm assuming this qualifies under that rule?
It would.
Thank you.
As far as your other questions, you know, we're, we're not, we're not set up to, to change the zoning code without extensive work by the planning department. And that comes through this committee and before public hearing, sometimes many times before, before any, any law gets changed. And, but, but I think that, you know, definitely, that's something that, that can be looked at to, to see if, in fact, we're not requiring any, any open space.
And the, the third question about the aesthetics and how this development looks, who would that be addressed to other than to try and persuade the developer to have a bit more originality?
Yeah, that, that's a developer question, that, you know, we're, we're, we can't address aesthetics from here, from this forum.
I don't believe you can in this state without a state change, state law change. Is that correct?
I wouldn't know that. But, but, but I do know that this panel does not, cannot address aesthetics. So I don't know whether it would be state or city.
Yeah, just a couple of things related to your comment. First of all, I'm going to put a plug in for the comprehensive planning effort that's fixing to, actually just started. And that's the venue where we're going to have several meetings, focus groups, open public meetings to have discussions about what the city's future plans are. And that will have a definite impact on future zoning. And overlay zoning and aesthetic controls can all be a part of those conversations. So I would encourage you and everybody else to become involved in those efforts as we do move forward as to what's the city going to be when it grows up. The plat restrictions, they are approved by the Planning Commission, and they can only be changed by a vote of the Planning Commission. So they run with the land even if the ownership changes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marie. Is there anyone else to address specific issues with regard to JLB rezoning?
Madam Chair, may I make, have a question? Could you, can someone from the city give us a little more information about how we would find out about the meetings that are appropriate to attend? Where will we, where, logistically, would we need to get that information?
You mean the meetings, on comprehensive planning? Yes. Marie, do you, are there any meetings currently scheduled?
None of the open public meetings. We just had our very first Advisory Core Group meeting last week. So from that, we're going to be doing a lot of the existing inventory, and then the community outreach part will really start in earnest in the spring. So you'll be seeing, you won't be able to miss it. So we'll make sure you're involved.
We'll also have a complete website and with videos and notifications. So we really want to get as many people in the community plugged in as humanly possible. And I do agree with Marie, I don't think anyone's going to be able to miss it.
Not if you have anything to do with the right. Okay. Okay. Is there anyone else to address JLB rezoning? Yes, sir?
Came in late, apologize.
That's okay.
So I'm not sure what already has been said.
Would you, if, if it's been said before, we'll, we'll.
Let me know.
Yeah, I'll either let you know or we'll listen to it again. Just give your name and address.
My name's James Lindeholm, and I live, James Lindeholm.
Would you spell your last name, please?
Yes, L-I-N-D-E-R-H-O-L-M. And I live on Olivia Avenue.
Okay.
Which is just one block off Four Mile Post. It's right in that area.
Okay, thank you.
My concern is that, I mean, I think that a lot of this public discussion has been about whether or not there's a right to do this or whatever. But it's my understanding, and I might be wrong on this, is that a large part of the land was originally residential and some part of it was for commercial. And now it's being pushed to all commercial, and the commercial is being pushed to highway zoning, which is a wider amount. And, you know, I, certainly somebody who lives there, I don't really see the need for any of that there. And I'm not sure how many other people feel the same way. But I, I think some of the public discussion has been about, well, it's commercial and it's going to be developed anyway, everybody should have known that. Well, certainly when I came in, I expected it to be developed, but I expected it to be developed under what was laid down there. And I understand that plans change, but I don't see the need for this, this change. I see the desire for it, but not the need, and that's a very different thing. And I think if people, one part of planning is to provide for change, but one part is to allow for residents to make plans as to where they want to live and choose a part of town they want to be in. And certainly, I expected that the commercial part would be developed, but if it's that in balance with residential, that's one thing. But to suddenly change it to this, there'd have to be a very compelling reason to do it. And there's plenty of highway commercial that's underutilized right now. I'm not sure there's a compelling need to move it from what it is. So I apologize to that point that's been made already by other people, but I couldn't get out of work.
I don't think anyone has made that particular point, so.
Okay. Thank you.
And, and I don't, some of the members may have comment on that or, or city planning Just, we will take that in, into consideration, as we always do.
Okay, thank you.
When a zoning change comes. Is there anyone else here to address JLB rezoning? Hearing no further comment, the public hearing is closed. I am going to ask Kimberly Battle to present the subdivision committee report.
Yes, ma'am. Subdivision committee, meeting was held on December 11th, 2013. We have the following recommendations. First item is Broadway Trianna subdivision, a minor. The, the committee recommends layout approval on two lots with a waiver on the angle of the side lot line between lots 1 and 2. Move to approve.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
The second item is Ledgen Wood Phase 5, re-subdivision of part of common area of Ledgewood subdivision Phase 3 and other land. This is presented for final approval on 20 lots.
Is it in order for final?
Yes, it is, with improvements and sidewalks to be completed by December the 9th of 2014.
Move to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Third item, Lodge at Jones Road, re-subdivision of portion of Lot 1 of Vinemont property is a minor. The committee recommends layout approval on two lots with a waiver on the angle of the side lot line between lots 1 and 2, and the non-radio lot lines between lots 1 and 2. Move to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
This is also presented for final approval on two lots.
Is it in order for final?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Fifth item, Meadows Boulevard Connector Road, the committee recommends layout approval.
Wait a minute, did you skip forward?
My apologies. Fourth item, Mapco, minor. The committee recommends relay, relay out approval on two lots with a waiver on the non-perpendicular lot line between lots 1 and 2, and the angle of the side lot line between lots 1 and 2. Move to approve.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
This is also presented for final approval on two lots.
Is it in order for final?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Move to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Fifth item, Meadows Boulevard Connector Road, the, the committee recommends layout approval for the road only. Move to approve.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Sixth item, Oakwood subdivision Phase 2 at Lake Forest. The committee recommends relay out and preliminary approval on 39 lots with a waiver on the non-radio lot line between lots 6 and 7, and 25 and 26. Move to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Seventh item, Old Cove Phase 4 at McMullen Cove, re-subdivision of Old Cove Phase 2 at McMullen Cove, and re-subdivision of Old Cove Common Area and easement at McMullen Cove. It's a minor. The committee recommends layout approval on two lots with a waiver on the angle of the side lot line between lots 1 and 2. Two in the common area and, excuse me, two in common area A, and Lot 2, common area B. Move to approve.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
This is also presented for final approval on two lots.
Is it in order for final?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Move to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eighth item, Overland Cove Phase 2, re-subdivision of tract A of Overland Cove. The committee recommends re-preliminary approval on 24 lots.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Ninth item, Providence Phase 8. The committee recommends relay out approval on 455 lots and re-preliminary approval on 52 lots with a waiver on double-fronted lots 35 through 45, 46 through 49, and 87 through 125. Non-radio lot line between lots 23, 24, 209 through 211, and the angle of, of the side lot lines between lots 23, 24, 2053, and 35 through 38. Move to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Tenth item, Strong Commercial Center subdivision Phase 2, re-subdivision of lots 2 and 3 of Strong Commercial Center Phase 1, re-subdivision of lots 2 of Strong Commercial Center subdivision, a minor. The committee recommends layout approval on two lots with a waiver on the angle of the side lot lines between Lot 1 and 3, and the non-perpendicular lot line between lots 1 and 3. Move to approve.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Moving on to location carry to an extent. First item is Huntsville Botanical Gardens, Lower Lake, number 806. A public hearing was held, would like to move to approve.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Moving on to resolution 1 through 13, it's amendment to a final plat. Doug Hill Farms petition for amendment of the final plat, remove plat restriction, restrictions on Lot 11, all STD land to remain in its natural state, no construction permitted. The public hearing was held, would like to move to approve.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Moving on to street name changes. The first is inspiration on Green Mountain subdivision, portion of Viridian Way to Bluff View Drive. The public hearing was held, would recommend, move to approve.
Is there any discussion?
Is that a new subdivision? It is.
It, it has some houses built in it.
But I mean the streets, do you?
Some, the streets were already named, that's why it's getting a, a name. It, it is sort of a looped street that, that really should, probably should have been named Bluff View for clarity to begin with. So I, I don't know how many houses are up there now, but there will be no, no changes for existing dwellings. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The next street name change, Holiday Boulevard. This is a new road connecting Highway 72 West to Brown's Ferry Road. Public hearing was held, would like to move to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Vacation of right-of-way. Vacate Pride Street and unnamed street, Colligan Street, and Lanier Alley. Lots 1 through 6, 9 through 14, Lanier Pride subdivision of Adam Hall Edition, and lots 11 through 26, 47 through 62, J-C McDonald Edition. The committee recommends, the Planning Commission recommended to the City Council for approval of said vacation. Move to approve.
Is there any discussion?
Just to clarify, this is the land behind Stone Middle School, correct?
Where the, where the fields, where the fields are located, is my understanding. No, no addresses or houses or businesses located in this area.
Gotcha.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, I'm going to, Sharon Tyson, the zoning committee chairman is, was not able to attend tonight, so I'm going to ask Les Tilery, who was at the zoning committee to, meeting to give us the report.
Okay, the zoning committee met on December the 4th, 2013. The first item is the JLB rezoning. The public hearing was held tonight. I would make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion?
Just a quick question. Is there anyone from Traffic Engineering to address Mr. Smith's questions about the transportation studies? I just wanted to, if you could just fill us in on what you found and...
Dennis Thompson, City of Huntsville. We did a 48-hour count to compare our peak hours with what Skipper used their baseline on. Actually, our AM numbers came back about 15 cars lower than they started with and our PM base count came back about 14 cars higher than they started with.
Does it make a difference for you if you do the study on a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday versus a Friday, Saturday?
Generally, I always do our studies on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. We rarely do weekend counts and that's...
And you average in additional traffic accordingly?
Right.
Okay, thank you very much.
Does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Thompson?
Not for him.
Okay, any further discussion?
Just to clarify, we had a lot of discussion about what would be built there, but that will come back before the planning commission. Right now, we're just doing the zoning, or it will not come back.
It depends on how the property is developed. If they do a subdivision, then you would see future subdivisions, or if they dedicate public roads, then you would see that. But you would not see like building permits for the developments of the actual buildings.
So this is the last opportunity for the community to get any input with that developer?
Depending upon how they develop it, yes.
Madam Chair, may I ask, Marie, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I mean, it's the last planning commission, I mean, the rezoning has to go to the city council, so there'll be another public hearing at city council level, so...
If, Marie, would you mind just elaborating a little bit on the particular process here because we are getting more questions. Everybody loves the Jones Valley property and whether or not it should or should not be developed, though is not the jurisdiction of this planning commission. If you could just help clarify the role of, as the current laws and ordinances and a property owner's rights.
Sure. The property is currently zoned for multifamily development, R2A, which would allow multifamily or single-family development. There is no provision under the city codes where we have set asides, as was referred to earlier, where there's a certain percentage or some areas of the community that have to be permanently set aside for open space. So it's really up to the developer, as long as he complies with the current codes and ordinances that are in place by the city, he has the ability to develop his property per those codes and restrictions. In this case, they're saying, hey, we really don't want to develop that 126 acres as multifamily, we would prefer to develop that as additional commercial, and so that's why they're before you to change a portion of those codes and requirements.
Was there some discussion about the impact of traffic from the maximum development of the multifamily as opposed to the commercial development? Did we have some discussion about that at zoning committee meeting? Does anybody remember?
Yeah, it was briefly mentioned that apartment traffic at peak hours particularly would probably have a greater impact than a commercial enterprise that opens typically later in the morning hours and then you wouldn't have that rush. But I don't know if they looked at that particularly in the study or not. Dennis, do you know?
They did a future build out for 2020 for single-family homes and there was no change in whether they do what they are asking for or do that.
So if I understand you correctly, figuring it as a build out of single-family homes, not multifamily, the traffic count was essentially the same as...
That's what I got out of it.
Estimated to be essentially the same as commercial?
That's what I got out of reading it.
And that was, was that the city's traffic count? Was that the city's...
That was performed by Skipper Incorporated.
Okay.
Yeah, what the, and just to clarify something that was said earlier, Skipper actually did a traffic study where they look at the traffic counts, the movements, the future development, and they analyze all that based on standards, national standards, and do modeling. All that the city has done is run a traffic count. And we took those counts and compared it to the data that they used in the report, just to validate it basically, and it did come out that it was validated based on the numbers that we got from our traffic counts as far as the input.
And if I, if I understand correctly, estimating it on single-family really didn't give the full impact as if it had been developed on the current zoning, which is multifamily?
Yeah, and again, I don't know, but if they did it on a single-family, you're looking at about three units per acre, and a multifamily, you're looking anywhere from 14 to 16 units an acre, so...
So that would be significantly more. And it is zoned multifamily.
It is, yes, ma'am.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor of JLB zoning, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
The next item is zoning ordinance amendment, Urban Chickens. Amend zoning ordinance Article III definitions, Article 73 supplementary regulations, and Article 92 Board of Adjustment to add regulations concerning urban chickens. The committee recommends that the planning commission set a public hearing for January the 28th.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay, thank you very much, but don't leave yet because there's more. Invocation and extension of bonds. Marie, would you give us the report on that?
Yes, ma'am. We would recommend the invocation for Hawks Ridge Fifth Edition or re-subdivision, Southgate and also Watercrest Phase Three.
Move to approve.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. And did that include Southgate too?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry, I just missed it. Okay, thank you very much. We need to appoint chairman for the zoning committee and for the subdivision committee and I had discussed this earlier with Kimberly Battle and she agreed to serve again, so I reappoint Kimberly as subdivision chairman and I also discussed with Sharon Tyson, zoning committee chairman, and she said she would be willing to serve again. So I reappoint Sharon Tyson as zoning commission chairman. Do we need to have those ratified by the commission?
No, ma'am.
Okay, okay, then those appointments will stand. Please note that the zoning and subdivision committee meeting dates for the month of January have changed as follows, and this is due to the submittal deadline that resulted in a conflict of dates. Zoning committee will be January 15th and subdivision committee will be January 26th. The planning commission general meeting date will remain January 28th and meeting times and locations shall remain the same. Is there any fir...
22nd or 26th of subdivision?
22nd, I'm sorry. If I said 26th, January 22nd is subdivision committee meeting. Is there any further business to come before the commission? Hearing no further business, I call the meeting adjourned.
I probably do need to point out, you know, our wayfinding consultants were snowed out, so they didn't get to come, but they will be at the January 15th zoning committee meeting for everybody that would like to hear that presentation.
Okay. So all members, of course, as usual, you know, there's no restriction on attending both the zoning committee and the zoning, and the planning, I'm sorry, the zoning committee and the subdivision committee. And so all members are invited, but it will be, you know, certainly information that we could all benefit from to hear the wayfinders, wayfinding people do their presentation.
Yes, sir.
Yes, and I wish every one of you a very merry Christmas.
Yeah, Merry Christmas.
And a Happy New Year. (laughing).